I was a minute ago. Thank you.
Lisa, you have to let me in.
It shows you're in.
Not my video. It says the host.
Yeah, same here.
That's a good thing.
Better think it over.
That's a good thing, though. I got a face for radio.
Lisa, it says that the host has stopped my video. Is that?
No, the panelists' videos were supposed to be on already.
Says it on mine, too, Lisa.
Okay. Well, this could be a problem. It's not giving me the option to turn your videos on.
We just had a meeting this afternoon. Everything was fine.
I know.
Can you hear everybody, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay.
Not sure why that's happening.
The only one I can see now is Dan.
I can't see anyone.
I can't see anyone now either. This isn't good.
Should we all try and exit and reenter?
Well, is it necessary that they have the video as long as they have audio? You can get, you can go ahead with the meeting. I mean.
That's true.
That's true. I'm sorry, everyone. I don't know why I can't turn your video camera on.
Can you get back to the way it was where we at least saw who else was attending?
I'm trying. There we go.
We just, I just see you. Do we have the other blocks, too?
Yes, I show rows in the part, in the attendees and not the panelists.
See, I have everybody in one. Oh, no.
And all I have, Lisa, is just the Zoom screen.
I show Carl in the attendees as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, his phone and rows.
All right.
Okay, now they're, now they're back there on this. Okay.
Frozen all that time, so I don't know that that's an active shot.
No, it's not. It's just a thumbnail.
Okay.
Well, this is going to be a new challenge. Do we want to go ahead and give this a shot?
I would vote to just go ahead. As long as we have audio, I believe that the governor's order understood that there would be technical difficulties. Nobody's doing this on purpose. It's a technical difficulty. Move forward with the meeting. Maybe she'll get it solved halfway through and we'll be on, we'll be on video.
Yeah, I'm sorry about this, everyone. I'm not sure why it's doing this.
Well, Lisa, do you think that if we were to all get off and then try to re-enter, that it might change things?
I'm not sure because this was a webinar instead of a regular meeting like we've done in the past. So I don't know if something's set up differently.
Oh, I see.
Okay, well, let's call to order this regular city council meeting for May 26, 2020. Let's all please stand with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And of the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Justice.
You're gonna have to forgive me, but you are gonna be my wingman tonight in helping me navigate this. So by, by your screen there, does it look like we have everyone? I'm kind of writing everyone down. Glenn.
Yes, it looks like everyone's here.
Okay.
Including Carl.
Okay. At this point, with the roll call being done, we'll move on to the approval of city council minutes, May 11, 2020.
I have something, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Okay, Lisa, on page four, the paragraph under new business, there's, there are two spots where it says the word immobilization is used. The word should be changed. Word should be changed to mobilization. And then on page five, about two-thirds of the way down in the paragraph that starts off with City Manager Zelnick, it talks about Superintendent Barney stated he is very familiar with the pumps. And I'd suggest just deleting "it implements" and have it read "and this type of technology." And that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Did anyone else have anything on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
It just dawned on me, we don't have a way to cue you about weighing in, so.
Right.
Try to be polite.
Please, let's all, let's all definitely bring everything we got tonight on that. With that, we'll move on to the approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll move the agenda.
I'll support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. At this point, we do have a small, quick proclamation on National Gun Violence Awareness Day. This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in South Lyon, Michigan, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we, as a country, must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas every day, 100-plus Americans are killed by gun violence. On average, there are nearly 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other high-income countries. And whereas protecting safety in the communities they serve is mayor, is the mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas support of Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas by wearing orange on June 5, 2020, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And now therefore be it resolved, I, Daniel L. Pelchat, Mayor, City of South Lyon, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, do hereby proclaim Friday, June 5, 2020, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of South Lyon. I encourage all citizens to support their local community's effort to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor the value of human lives. And with that, we will open up the public comment for this evening. Please remember to state your name and address.
Mr. Mayor, I believe people have to raise their hand or request to speak at public comment.
Now, is that any, can Lisa see that?
Dan Schwegler has raised his hand.
Okay, Mr. Schwegler, go ahead.
All right, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna hang up from the phone one so that I don't have any feedback for you. So, my name is Dan Schwegler. I live at 23755 Prescott Lane East here in South Lyon. And for those who may not be aware, I am the one kind of leading that path there on rehabilitating the RCA building. So I just wanted to speak. Is this the right time for this? Or no, I should be doing this in a public hearing for tax abatement, correct?
That'd be preferred.
Okay, you know what, then I will lower, I will release my hand and I'll wait till then. I'm sorry, I got a little ahead of myself.
Nope, that's no problem. City Clerk Deaton, are you seeing anyone else out there looking for public comment this evening?
No, there's no one raising their hand.
Okay.
Lisa, if somebody is participating just by calling in the telephone, would you see a raised hand?
Well, we only have one phone number. I don't see anybody else calling in just by phone, and that phone number we have is Carl, and I have him unmuted.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, City Attorney Hamame, and helping us navigate this meeting this evening. All right, at this time, we will close our public comment and move on to the discussion of the downtown. Paul, if you would go ahead and lead us off.
I want to bring up, everybody up to date on the farmer's market is still planned to be opened for Saturday, for Saturday in June, June 6. We had a Zoom meeting this morning on it to prepare for that event with Police Chief, Fire Chief, the Market Manager. We're discussing all the safety precautions to open up that market. We have a couple of weeks to prepare, and we look forward to having that in South Lyon. And it will be a limited market based upon the number of vendors that are allowed based upon the governor's rule. I know I, conversations with Tim today, we had, the market vendors are spaced apart, and we'll, we'll be having social distancing and limiting the number of attendees within the market. The other item I wanted to bring up was the crowdfunding campaign. We're still moving forward with that. We did extend that to June 14th, so we'll still raise money. Thus far, we've raised over $2,000, and hopefully we can raise the additional $2,000 before that June 14th date. And that's all I have right now, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Or we can wait till the manager's report later on in the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Absolutely, go ahead.
It's Councilmember Dilk, sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember Dilk. I couldn't tell yet, so thank you.
Just a quick question on the vendors that will be allowed since there's fewer than normal. Was that, were there ones that had to kind of be cut or told they had to wait until another date? Or how were you handling that?
They are allowed to be food or some certain type of product. They cannot just be people having wood products or something like that. I, I don't have the criteria all sitting in front of me, but I will provide that with you to show who is allowed and who is not. I know we've had some contact, but we are restricted as of right now. That may change before the June 6 date. And if that's the case, then we'll rearrange how the market would be set up.
So because of the governor's orders, that's, it has to be food or product?
That's correct.
Okay, and then were there any people who wanted to, that were food and product, but we had to limit it so that they couldn't be in the market?
I have not heard that because I know we still have additional space within the market, so I, I can check with the Market Manager on that.
Okay, just wondered. Thank you.
I have a question and a comment, please.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
First off, I was happy to see that the tavern and the hotel are back online with providing carryout. So that's, that's good to see them active again. And Paul, I was wondering if there's been any further information garnered from 110 Detroit Street?
I know the property was sold, and they are making improvements inside the building. I know I had conversations with our building official on that, and I can get you further updates. I'll talk with them again this week.
Oh, that's terrific. Well, it's good to hear some forward progress, at least. That, that's actually, I guess that's all I need. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything for City Manager Zelnick at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, request to be recognized.
Yep, Councilmember Kurtswell, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two, just two issues. One sort of tags along with the questions raised by Lisa. And I did receive a complaint today regarding someone who is trying to get into the farmer's market. Did speak with the Market Manager, apparently. But, but this particular individual has a mix of food and product. So the question now is, those rules that you say are in, are, are being formed, it sounds like they've already been formed because somebody already told her she could not participate. So is the rule that the vendor has to bring 100% food? Or is the rule, you have to have 50% food? And is there a quota because there's a social distancing requirement? So if you had 50 people that participated in the farmer's market last year, is there now only going to be allowed 25 or 20 because of the social distancing? If that's the case, then how are you making your selection as to who can be a vendor on June 6 and who cannot? So that, that's the first issue. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. I'll have this individual contact you, Paul.
Okay.
The next one is that several people have contacted me on this one. And this is regarding Senate Bill 939 and House Bill 5781. And this is about creating social districts in a downtown area. For example, if the hotel has to open with only 25% occupancy, then if this legislation goes through and if it's approved, then it would permit that business to increase its capacity by, by having what's called the social district, districts on the outside. In other words, they're looking at providing open container in the streets. But it has to be in a very specific and defined area. So I just wanted to put that out there, that this is being considered as a temporary, short-term solution to restaurants that have lost phenomenal revenue and giving them an additional opportunity to expand their footprint a little bit to the outside. I guess this would mean that you would be able to drink on the sidewalks or maybe you set up stations in the farmer's market during the weeknights. There is a requirement that the person carrying the drink to the social district has to have the logo of the business on it so you know at all times, you know, where the alcohol was obtained. But I just wanted to get it out there that this is being considered, and we'll see where it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything for the City Manager at this time? Okay, we will move on to the Fire Chief report, and Chief Vogel. Is that right? Okay. How about Chief Sovik?
Yeah, I'm here.
All right, well, you go ahead and lead off, and we'll see if we can get Chief Vogel in on this here, if you don't mind.
Okay, just two quick things. Everybody, if the PD is healthy, our cadets, our administrative assistants, all of our officers all tested, tested negative for the COVID and tested negative for the antibody. So I think our practices inside the station and personally at home are doing well, and so I'm thankful for that. And the only second piece I have is we have almost about $17,000 worth of grants and applications, and two separate applications. That's going to be heard by the MMRMA on June 3rd. So we should know sometime by the next meeting whether or not we're going to be collecting that, those two grants. It's totaling about $17,000 for some reimbursement for the in-car cameras that we recently purchased. So other than that, I don't have anything.
Does anyone have anything for Chief Sovik? All right, that's great news, Chief. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I believe Chief Vogel does want to speak.
Yep, I see his name popped up, and as soon as Chief Vogel's ready, we're ready to hear him.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we got you, Chief.
I don't know what happened. I just got kicked out. Now it works great. Yeah, sorry about that. Just, we continue to plan for our opening. Unfortunately, the governor kind of threw me a curveball late Friday afternoon and extended the stay at home. We met today, and we still plan to open under the guidelines that the state's allowing for training. We, there's some great opportunities with the McCady House and the Westlake Street House building, excuse me. I'm afraid we're gonna miss the opportunity because they're planning to be demoed pretty quickly. I'm waiting to hear from Paul when that is scheduled to happen. We met with the farmer's market, and we also had the Fire Marshal come in today, and he's been working on the farmer market, the fireworks tent, and then trying to get numbers for the retail in town regarding occupancy. We've been working pretty hard to try to get a baseline for all the businesses. We've had the bars and restaurants done for years. We just didn't, by law, didn't really have to do retail, but we've been working on that. And finally, we got our grant submitted for full-time firefighters. The good news is, if awarded the grant, they changed the law because of COVID. Instead of a percentage, the federal government would cover 100% for three years. So we're hoping to hear something by that, hopefully by July. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Chief Vogel. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Chief?
I did, Mayor. Just, Rob, I just want to say congratulations. That's absolutely wonderful news about.
We didn't get it. Didn't get it, we're hoping. Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed, buddy. Fingers crossed.
I just wanted to add, it was, it was really evident that Fire Department wasn't engaged yesterday in the Memorial Day services. I missed seeing the aerial. I missed seeing the aerial.
Yeah, you know, and I, we, I debated on putting the flag up.
I know there's a lot of people have to be involved in raising that, so I, I understand it, but it was, it was missed.
Yeah, and, and honestly, even Sunday, I sat there and I thought to myself, is this something we should, you know, schedule? And I regretted maybe not doing it. I saw a couple places around the state put the flag up, and I thought to myself later that I kind of regretted that.
Well, no, no spilt milk, but it was noticed. I mean, you know, when we, you lose the parade, it was really a shame to not have something more substantive to be able to remind of the occasion, that's all.
Yep.
Does anyone else have anything for Chief Vogel this evening? All right, great. Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Mayor.
So moving on, tonight we have two public hearings on the agenda. This is the first public hearing on the 2020-2021 budget. At this time, I will now open the public hearing on the proposed 2020-21 budget at 7:53 PM. Would anyone like to comment on the proposed 2020-21, 2021 budget at this time?
There's no hands going up for the attendees.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Hearing done. I will now close the pub, public hearing on the proposed 2020-2021 budget. The second public hearing is for the Commercial Rehabilitation Exemption Certificate Application for Property 80-21-20-360-0231855 Holdings LLC at 135 East Lake Street, the property formerly known as the RCA Building. I will now open the public hearing on the Commercial Rehabilitation Exemption Certificate Application for Property 80-21-20-360-0231855 Holdings LLC at 135 East Lake Street at 7:54 PM. And Mr. Schwegler, if, if you would like the floor, the time is yours.
Wonderful, thank you. I'm glad I'm in the right spot on this agenda now. So as I was saying, my name is Dan Schwegler, 23755 Prescott Lane East in South Lyon. My wife and I have lived here since 2007. We kind of drove out here on a whim, and we just fell in love with the place. Since we've been here, we've added four kids to our family. We're very active in the community in terms of sports. 2015, I moved my business to Lyon Township so that I could keep that nice and close as well. I currently am filling in a vacant seat that was created on the school board. So I'm heavily invested in the community. When I first saw the for-sale sign go up on the RCA building, I immediately called the Realtor to start asking questions and really thinking about the possibilities of what can be. It's such an iconic building in the town. It's unique, and clearly it's been neglected for, for way too long. During that process, I connected with Bob Donahue to kind of discuss what I wanted to do with the building. And for those that don't know, I, I literally just wanted to rehab it, move my business down there to the first floor, rehab the apartment buildings, and just make the building nicer again. Bob had different ideas, and I give him a lot of credit for it. Through our conversations, he helped me to realize how much more that building could be. He talked about the, the vision of the DDA wanting to enhance what we had in our downtown to bring more retail, to bring more restaurants, and I bought into his vision. I started planning with my architect, and through that, we decided, you know, to get this to happen, we're gonna have to add a third story, which is what we're currently planning to do. There were two big things that Bob really wanted me to, to take into account, and that's the city's love of its history. Those stone walls, some love them, some hate them, but those stone walls are a fixture in that downtown. And he made it very clear that people would love nothing more than to preserve the look of that building through the renovation. In addition to that, I wanted to make sure that anybody who wanted to go into the building can use it, which meant spending the extra money and taking up some of that valuable real estate and putting in an elevator so that everybody has the opportunity to visit that third-floor part of the restaurant. With those things, the, the project cost kind of went a lot, a lot higher than I was originally planning to do. But again, I bought into that vision that Bob had. He's been a huge supporter of the project. I know he's no longer there, but I can't help but thank him for helping to help shape that tax abatement policy and to give the city council a lot of credit to show their support in having that kind of tool in their toolbox to spur the development for those parts of the city that really need to be done. So as of today, just on the current construction costs alone, I'm looking at about 1.7 million in just hard construction costs. That does not include the finishing touches on the kitchen and the bar part of the restaurant. Soft costs are coming in somewhere between 160,000 and 200, and I purchased the building for 135 grand, which means my total investment in that. for 135 grand, which means my total investment in that building alone is going to be about $2 million. I hope that I can get it a little bit lower, but given the current state of construction, I don't know how much lower I'm going to be able to get it. So that's what brings me here today. The tax abatement program is, is something that can give me an opportunity over the next three, four years to kind of catch my breath, if you will. I've read the guidelines for the program. I understand that I'm in that first tier with my total investment, and I understand that the guidelines suggest two to three years. I'm coming to the council today to ask for four. I know that the current tax base has been a pittance for the last 40 years. I am fully expecting that when the valuation comes back after the completed project, it will be a significant increase in the tax base to the city, and I am prepared to pay that when that time comes. But like I said, pushing off the increase for a few years allows me to catch my breath financially to ensure that I can take care of whatever unknowns come up down the road. So I think you guys have all the information you need. If you have any questions, please let me know. But I wanted to thank you in advance for your time consideration, and I will certainly respect your decision when that time comes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwagler, on that. Lisa, are we seeing anyone out that may be here for our public hearing?
No attendees are raising their hand.
I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to interrupt for the, for the record, though, Lisa. Can you confirm that there's nobody on a telephone call that might want to be heard?
Just Carl.
Okay, thank you.
City Attorney Hamame, at any time this evening, if you have a, a speed bump or hiccup that you need to have cleared up, do not hesitate to interrupt, please.
Thank you.
At this time, Mr. Mayor, the, the board can ask questions of the applicant during the public hearing.
Okay. It looks as if Mr. Schwagler is still available. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Schwagler this evening?
I actually would like to ask a question.
Councilmember Kivell, go ahead.
I'm interested in having an understanding of whether you think that the February 21 timeline is going to be able to be realized for the finish of the project.
Great question. That was absolutely within the original goal until everything got shut down. The crews did get started immediately after the governor allowed the contractors to go back to work. So as of May 11th, we have been working. In discussing with my contractor, the, the only curveball we're really looking at is really the restaurant owner and whether it's appropriate to open as quickly as possible. So while the February timeline, if we rushed it, could probably be met, I think we're going to take a more cautious approach and really just delay it by what we've been delayed by. So we're, we're kind of looking at late March, April right now, which is, which would have been the, the same amount of actual construction time. But, you know, that, that stoppage kind of put us back a few weeks, and we don't know what that, the delay in the contractor's schedules are going to look like, because I'm sure they're backlog as well. But the goal is to keep that same original amount of actual construction time, so somewhere around March or April is what I'm guessing.
Okay. Could I ask, Mr. Zelnick, what vehicle we use to amend whatever the drop dead is on that, on the application?
Well, as part of your approval, you, city council does in fact have a, within, within the guidelines, it does mention that there is a written agreement that can specify certain conditions of the approval. So it could be, you know, when the, when the project or how long exactly, or it could, or it could be written within the, the resolution about how long you want the abatement to be for. So if you want, I know the applicant mentioned three years, or if he was requesting four years, you could, you could allow it to be three years, or you could extend it to be longer if the applicant, you know, does in fact invest a certain amount of money. But there are restrictions that, you know, failure to finish in a timely manner or delinquency regarding property taxes or something else that would potentially eliminate or negate the actual resolution or the abatement.
So is there a way to contractually modify the application or actually in the resolution? It, it seems unrealistic for us to try to determine what the, the drop dead should be, but I don't want to end up having soft language that would allow it to, to be able to be abused in the event that there was a hiccup that should have been attended to and hadn't been.
Well, there's certain restrictions within the law that states that for granting an abatement, there's a certain timeframe of six months about when the abatement is granted, of when the applicant can actually start work. If you are in fact granting the abatement as of December 31st, 2020, he will get, or the owners would get a partial abatement for, it would still be a full abatement, but it would only be based upon a certain percentage completed as of December 31st, which is deemed tax day. If they do in fact not complete that building until next April, the following December 31st, that property value would be, would be reevaluated and the taxable value would be determined, and that year would be another year of the abatement. But they would not be receiving the full abatement the first year because they were only partially complete.
Okay.
The full value abatement. They automatically have their taxes frozen based upon the current land and building value. It's just that the amount that they potentially could not, could get is not the, the maximum amount because the building is not totally complete.
Right. That really doesn't address the timeline being cut off, though. I mean, as it stands right now, it's at February, and he's suggesting March or April. So are you suggesting that we try to use those as benchmarks for the, the completion?
Can I, I'm sorry, this is Lisa Hamame. Can I intervene?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Kivell, the, the policies that city council adopted in relation to these types of tax abatements specifically requires that a agreement between the city and the applicant be entered into if a tax abatement request is granted. And, you know, in the policies themselves, we indicated certain things that we could include in there, and timelines could certainly be one of the agreements that we, or conditions that we placed into this agreement. And a violation of the agreement could very well result in a revocation of the certificate. That, in addition to the fact that the act itself has language that authorizes the city council to revoke a certificate if it finds that completion was, had not occurred within the time authorized by the legislative body, which could be in that agreement or can be in the resolution. But it also allows the city to revoke an exemption if the applicant has not proceeded in good faith. And so there are mechanisms, I think, to protect you, but primarily, I think it's going to be that agreement. So if this gets approved, you could condition your approval on entering into that agreement as the policies require, but I anticipate the applicant would be willing to enter into such an agreement. And any violation of that agreement then could result in a revocation of the certificate. Does that help?
So the agreement will be the actual document that we're, we're holding his feet to the fire? The application was simply to get his foot in the door?
Well, I, I believe the application had, you know, a best estimate completion date. I don't know that it was a, and I'd have to look at the application again, but my recollection was that was like a, an estimate. Usually, usually, you know, an applicant would have as long as the abatement is. So, I mean, technically, if you give him a three-year abatement, there's nothing, there's nothing in the act that requires he provide, he complete the project any sooner than the three years. This would be a requirement that you add into either this resolution or the agreement, or both, if you prefer.
Okay, well, that, actually, that timeline does have a substantial difference in whether or not this is a, a good agreement to enter in if it's going to end up languishing for three years. So that, that changes things quite a bit.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
City Manager Zelnick, go ahead.
The, when they fill out the application for commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate, they do in fact put in there a planned date of rehabilitation. That is to assist the board in determining the length of the exemption, because it does potentially play into how much total taxes are being abated through the process. So if the first year of the abatement is, let's say, only 50% of the value and not 100%, that may lend yourself to say, okay, we'd like to extend it a little bit further to allow them to get the full abatement, or perhaps it was only 25% or 10%. And then the following year, it may be 100%, and the following year may be 100% as well. And that will gauge or help in the process of determining how much taxes total they would get in abatement. So you would say it's going to either be three years or four years or longer or shorter. So the numbers they put on there helps this body determine how much total taxes would be abated.
We've got a couple of things that are sort of imposed on us. The work before the six month of the application can't be covered. And then essentially, formulaically, what the value of the improvements are to, to determine what the length of, you know, according to what our chart is, the length of the abatement would end up coinciding with. So we've already, we're already into that six-month thing. I, I quite honestly, I don't have any misgiving at all with the idea of us having the extension. He's suggesting that we've got a $1.7 million investment that's taking place. I think that personally, I would like to see us approve the three-year with the, the potential extension in the event that Oakland County Assessor's Office determines that the, the improvements have, the investment into the structure has exceeded the 1.5 million that would account for that fourth year's worth of, of abatement. So now it's a matter of how do we end up structuring this thing? The idea that you're suggesting that there would be different levels of rate per year rather than 100% of whatever had been achieved to that point, I'm, I'm not tracking how that, how that fits into the picture.
What I was trying to say if that, if I, Mr. Mayor, is that if the total investment is going to be 1.7 million at the date of completion, and that may not be until April or May of next year, it may only be $800,000 of investment by December 31st. Therefore, when the tax assessor assess, or puts the taxable value on the property, times the millage rate, that amount, had it not been abated, will be substantially less than it would been if it would have been of 100%. So I'm trying to, the point I'm trying to make is that the first year abatement of taxes are much less than a full 100% completion. So therefore, if you were looking at this in dollar amount and trying to determine, you know, how much tax abatement you want to give to an applicant, if they're only getting 25% or 50% the first year, you may say, okay, well, we'd like to give them the 100% abatement for the next three years because they're, if we only gave them the first year and it's only 25%, and the next two years are at 100%, it's, it's not as much money had it been the property completed on December 31st and they got three full years of 100% abatement on a completed piece of property.
Okay, I understand that then. Quite honestly, my feeling is I would like to use that as an incentive tool. It, it behooves them to accomplish what they can as quickly as they can to be able to reveal whatever the largest sum of abatement that they can get as early as they can get it.
Thank you, Councilmember Kivell.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So if I understand what Councilmember Kivell and the city manager are talking about, in the third year, December of the third year, this would come back before the council and they would say, you know, it's been a good faith effort. It had, you know, it's, it's kind of been, you know, linear as far as the amount of effort that went forth in redoing the, the property. He didn't do just a 5% improvement the first year, 5% the second year, and then was going to, you know, go, go straight, you know, straight out the last year, do 90%. I mean, he's, he's plugged along on it. But at the December of that third year, based on that performance, we could extend the abatement for that fourth year. Is that something we could do?
Yes, I believe that's true. And maybe the city attorney wants to comment on that as well. But I, I believe that would have to be written within the resolution.
So again, I'm going to direct you back to the policies that city council had adopted. And I think that there was a structure, and I'm trying to fumble through it right now. There was a structure about generally how you were going to handle, how you were going to handle determining the term of any abatements, depending on the dollar amount expended. So if you were, if you were considering doing the, you know, the three years within those parameters that are in your policies, that's one thing. If in fact you were intending to waive those policies, then, you know, you would need to obviously make a motion to consider waiving it. I don't think necessarily, we haven't, in the policies, we did not address extensions. And so I think that you're fine if you want to handle it that way, where you fall within the parameters for the first three years with that option. The resolution itself, though, would have to specifically allow an extension, and it has to state the factors, criteria, and object, and objectives that you're going to consider whether or not to grant that. And obviously, I heard, you know, good faith, and I, I thought there was also some monetary considerations as a factor as well. So we'd have to come up with those factors and criteria that you would apply in determining whether an extension for that extra year should be granted.
If I could interject here. Okay, so the original application suggested that the project could end up being pretty much performed within a year, understanding that COVID has kind of thrown a monkey wrench in that. It still seems viable that two years would end up allowing that project to be continued or completed. The, the extension, I'm, I'm guessing I must have read it out of 210 rather than our document, because I looked back through ours again, and I wasn't finding the, the language for the extension. But 210 specifically says that you can create extensions, and since Oakland County would be the only ones that would be Oakland County Assessor's Office, would be the only ones that would validate what the actual investment had been through one of the three processes that, that they would use. We wouldn't actually know what the ultimate investment had been until they weighed in on the thing. So af, after that third year, if there was evidence that they had breached that million and a half investment marked, or mark, which should actually be after two years, according to Mr. Schwagler's comment about his ability to complete this in the, or the March-April in the, or the March-April of next year timeline, I think that that should end up simplifying the idea of what our language needs to be.
Well, so if I could just respond very quickly. So Oakland County Equalization is not going to talk, tell you what the investment amount was. They're going to tell you what the taxable value is, which is usually 50% of the investment amount. The applicant can demonstrate the investment amount to you.
Okay, so who does the, the accounting for the submission of what the investment had been?
We, we get information from the building, the applicant submits it to the building department. The building department uses it to determine the cost of a permit. Now, the applicant can in fact, I mean, we can use some of this information to assist in determining what the taxable value actually is of the property. And it was, as was mentioned by Councilmember Kibble, the assessor would use one of three methods to determine what the value of that property is, through the cost approach, market approach, or income approach of the property. We can determine, you know, what that value actually is, or we can put the mechanisms in place, whether it's, you know, staff meeting with the building inspector and maybe with the help of the equalization department to determine to see if the information that the applicant did, did provide is accurate. And then we've, you know, you move, we move forward and, and make that final decision. Because it is, it won't always be what the investment will be will determine what the, half of it will be the taxable value, because you could potentially invest more, but the market doesn't necessarily bear what the true investment was.
Okay, now, we had talked earlier and it was suggested that the, that fourth year could be predicated on the investment of the million and a half. It doesn't have, it doesn't necessarily translate to the property's value, but it, it still is the investment. So is, are, are we looking at it in a, in different terms now? That it, we are solely going to be judging this by what the value that equalization determines is going to be the thing that, um, that determines what the value of the property is?
I, I think we're talking about two different things. So the taxable value at the end of 2020 is going to determine the, the tax assessment for the property. And that's going to be the freeze as of December of 2020. That's when it's frozen. And for the term of, whatever term you agree on, that's all the applicant's going to have to pay, except, except any increase in value during that time is still paid to the schools.
Which will give us the, the number of investment that's, or actually the escalation in the value of that property. We won't realize it, but nonetheless, we'll know how the value has escalated.
Yes, but you won't realize it. The schools will only realize their portion. And that's for the term, that's for the term that you agree on. Now, the other part of this-
We will understand what, what the invest, or what the value is.
At the end, at the end of each year, as Paul indicated, you won't realize that. You, when I say realize it, I mean, you won't be able to collect the increase.
No, I know it, but we're going to understand that that'll be added to the sum from the previous year, so we'll know how much it's escalated, so we can kind of forecast where we're going to land at.
Yes. But, but the second part of what we were talking about, where I think we were kind of mixing up some terms, is you are correct. It is Public Act 210 that talks about the ability to, for the extension. But it is Public Act 210 that specifically says that if you are considering an extension, you have to provide in your resolution the factor criteria and objectives for such an extension. And that's where I threw out some of the factors that you could include would be, you know, the good faith of the applicant moving forward, the investment amount, or if you wanted to look at some taxable value based on, you know, the previous year, you can do that. I was just giving you options to add as factors to consider if you wanted to extend.
Right, then that's why I had suggested if it would, if we got evidence that it was, the investment had gone beyond the million and a half, that could end up being the trigger for that fourth year, the extension.
Yes, yes, that's a good point. And you're talking under our policies and the structure we'd laid out.
That's correct.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question. I don't know if a point of order or what, but is this appropriate in the public, uh, in the public hearing to have this discussion? Shouldn't we be doing this in new business?
It does state within the, um, the information that the public, or that the board and the applicant can discuss it during the public hearing.
Okay, it just seemed to go beyond the questions. Okay, thanks.
I think, I think Councilmember Dill, I think this all kind of morphed from questions to the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
So do we have anyone else that wishes to speak? There you go, yeah, it looks like some of our video is popping up. So if you could try that again, that would be great if you're interested.
Yeah, that's wild.
So does anyone else have anything during our public hearing?
I've got a question, Mayor.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
My question is to Lisa, City Attorney. If at the end of the three years on this agreement, okay, if things aren't, the amount of money invested and everything doesn't match up right, and the, uh, certain aspects aren't completed, would the city have the option to ask for a performance bond? Because I don't read anything like that in here at that time. And also, uh, I, I don't see anything in here that indicates that we have the legal authority to implement a penalty clause for non-completion within a certain period of time to any applicant, because we're going to get more applicants through the years here, okay, for their improvements. And I think it would be dis- disenchanted to others to, uh, you know, have to go through this, okay, if it doesn't work out. This is the biggest deal in the center of town at this time. Lisa? Can't hear you. Didn't go through.
Councilmember Richards, we do hear you. Um, City Attorney Hamamé, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
So Councilmember Richards, we talked about if you approve an exemption certificate, if you approve an applicant, then the applicant is required to enter into an agreement with the city. And you could require of the applicant anything reasonable by way of deadlines for completions. I don't know if that answers your question, but we could certainly put that in the agreement that the applicant's going to have to sign if you approve this. As far as a performance guarantee, I, I'm, I don't think that that's really... I've never been asked that. It's not addressed in the, in PA 210. I don't know, and it's not addressed in our policies. I don't know what would be the point of that, because you are able to revoke the exemption certificate if he doesn't meet certain timelines or if he's not acting in good faith. So I think that's your remedy.
Okay, I, I would get you. I don't pretend to understand all the legal ramifications, but I'm familiar with other construction, uh, things that have gone on in other communities, okay? And I just thought it was a fairly good question, because, uh, this is a lot of money and resources being put into this one site. And it's in the center of town and other people will be affected by it. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Respect to the performance bond, performance bond. I think we have, I remember working on one years ago when I was on the planning commission. And a performance bond is a bond that the builder posts to guarantee that the project will be completed. Many developers have to post performance bonds. It's, it's a very, uh, normal kind of part of the process. I know South Lion has used them in the past. They used them on my development in Pulte Homes, because I put a claim on the performance bond with respect to certain issues with my home before they left the subdivision. So what the performance bond does is something very different than the tax abatement. What the performance bond does is say, if the builder does not finish the job, so Dan doesn't finish the job, then we could have a performance bond in place that, that we could then hire the workers to finish the job. So I think what Carl is doing is confusing the two things. A performance bond is very different from the tax abatement, but we probably could get a performance bond on this project if we wanted to.
So does anyone have anything to add to that? Okay, so at this time, it is 8:29. I will now close the public hearing on the commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate, application for property 80-21-20-360-023, 1855 Holdings LLC at 135 East Lake Street. And with that, we'll move on to old business number one, 2020-2021 budget approval.
Mr. Mayor, all of you have received the proposed 2021 budget document. At tonight's meeting, we, we held a public hearing for the budget. Tonight, you're going to consider the approval of the millage rate resolution, also the approval of the 2021 budget resolution. We've attached the millage rate resolution and the budget resolution. We've provided you updated revenue sheets based upon county taxable values that have been provided to us, as well as information regarding the reduction of revenue amounts based upon the meetings we've had with the Department of Treasury and data we received for them for not only the 2021 budget, but also for the 2019-20 budget. There are two separate motions that will be needed tonight for approval. But before that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have tonight.
Councilmember Dill? Your mic's off.
I was just playing, sorry.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Doesn't sound like there's any questions.
Well, I will entertain a motion to approve the millage rate resolution. Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the millage rate resolution.
I'll support.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Kurzweil, supported by Councilmember Kibble, to approve the attached millage rate resolution. Could we please get a roll call vote? City Clerk Deaton?
Walton?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kurzweil?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Bellchat?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
City Clerk Deaton, go ahead.
I think we have it figured out now, and I think you are all able to turn your own cameras on. I cannot, but I see some of you already have. So if anybody else wants to, you should be able to.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. So we are now looking for the second motion to approve the annual budget resolution.
Mr. Mayor?
Is that Councilmember Wal- Walton?
Correct.
Uh, yes, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to approve the 2020-2021 budget, annual budget.
I'll support.
We have a motion by Councilmember Walton, supported by Councilmember Dill, to approve the attached annual budget resolution. City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Sure. Kibble?
I have a comment.
It's my apologies, Councilmember Richards. I did not ask for discussion. Please go ahead.
I'd just like to make it known that, uh, this is a deadline. We have to approve this by state law. However, if it's at all possible, during the course of this budget, okay, there are certain elements that depend upon, uh, contributions and donations and further approval by other entities, such as, such as the school. And, uh, if it comes to pass that these do not, uh, come about, uh, it's my res, my recommendation that we be able to ta- transfer that money in the second half of this budget into something simple that will benefit the city, such as, uh, uh, local streets or something, something as simple that we can all realize within a period of the calendar year or the, you know, the fiscal year. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I did want to say that in, in the late hour, I am going to vote for the budget for two specific reasons. One is, uh, finally, uh, the city is beginning to plan ahead and deal with the unfunded liabilities, uh, even though it's not the pension. At least it's OPEC and it's a start. It's something that the city, as we know, uh, the state had to sort of knock us, knock on the door and remind us of this liability. And I'm glad to see that somebody is finally starting to address some of those unfunded contingent liabilities. So that's number one. Number two, I have always advocated for a full-time fire chief. And I think with the recent events with COVID-19, the necessity of a full-time fire department is absolutely critical to public health. And I'm glad to see that that is in this budget for tonight. So, um, so many in the community have asked me about it. And I told them that I was working really hard, fighting, expressing my opinion, raising my voice, raising my hand. And I think there is strong support in the community for a full-time fire chief. So I will be voting yes on the budget tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurzweil. Did anyone else want to join in the discussion before we go with the roll call vote? Okay, great. Lisa, back to you.
All right, Walton?
Yes.
Kurzweil?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Bellchat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. We'll now move on to new business number one this evening, tax abatement. Paul, I'm going to kick it over to you.
Correct, Mr. Mayor. The city council recently adopted a tax abatement policy for the community. The policy outlined the requirements for establishing the district and for approving proposed property tax abatement as outlined in Public Act 210. March, city council established a commercial rehabilitation district for the property formerly known as the RCA Building. Property owner filed the application with the clerk for the, for the exemption certificate. Clerk provided a written notification to all taxing jurisdictions. The city has 60 days which receive the application or approve or disapprove the application. Tonight, we held the file, the public hearing to vote on- Tonight, we held the file of the public hearing to vote on there. Our to go over the resolution for the commercial tax abatement. And now we will look at whether council will approve or disapprove. The commercial tax abatement on that particular property. We've attached information on the commercial tax abatement, the map identifying the property, the resolution. The summary sheet from Oakland County, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation Commercial Rehabilitation Sheet. The city guideline for establishing the districts. The public hearing notice, example of tax abatement for for the amount for the property. And a resolution approving the commercial exemption certificate. And also the guidelines or the potential tax abatement for a number of years. So the council action tonight is to approve or not approve the resolution. For the commercial tax rehabilitation exemption certificate for eighteen fifty-five Holdings LLC at one thirty-five East Lake Street.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Paul, at what point will the resolution need to be modified to attend to the extension of the fourth year? Under the terms that they they hit that million and a half threshold?
Right now, you would need to include that information within whatever resolution that you're approving tonight.
So essentially just add a whereas and and set up the terms?
City Attorney, I believe, wants to speak on this. She's been raising her hand.
City Attorney, I'll take the lead, please.
I I just wanted to let you know the resolution that's in front of you. It's in the packet. Um, there is a whereas with a few asterisks, asterisks. And that's exactly where it would go. It, you know, that particular whereas says the applicant was approved for less than ten years. And the following factors, criteria and objection objectives are necessary for extending the exemption. So the statute allows the extension. This resolution will allow you to limit it and to apply the factors and criteria. And then if you if obviously the asterisk goes down to a notation, which if you're going to approve for ten years, then that whereas and this notation would be removed.
Okay, so we're not talking about ten years. So what you want to, how do we end up creating the specifics that we're we've been speaking or I've been speaking to? I don't know how anyone else feels about it, so.
So you would you would, so you would, if if a motion were to approve, you would. Approve the resolution or adopt the resolution approving the district. With the addition of adding this third, fourth whereas, whatever factors you want to add. As well as the date, the deadline date that you'd like to add. And the very end, you would add, so there's really three areas at the very end, the now therefore be it resolved. Is where you'd state the number of years. So you'd state the first, however many years you want to allow it, beginning December thirty-first, twenty twenty. And then ending December thirtieth, whatever year, depending on how many years you want to give it. So there's three areas that you'd have to fill in this resolution. So an emotion to approve would be a motion to adopt this resolution as amended today or as we discussed today. And it would be by filling in those three blanks.
Okay.
I know I went roundabout on that, so I hope you got where I was going.
And notice that the end, the resolution, it does state that it ends on December thirtieth. So that is the day before tax day. So the following year then, that would be the year that we would get the normal taxes on the property.
Uh, could I ask a question?
Councilmember, go ahead.
Is is anyone resistant to the notion of allowing the extension of the fourth? The fourth year in the event that it is determined that the investment is has exceeded a million and a half?
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I mean, I would support that. My my question, I guess, is. Does the Lisa, do you expect us to fill this in tonight? Or knowing if we get agreement that everybody's agreement for that fourth year? You take this back, actually write it in, fill in all the blanks, and then we approve the resolution as written?
Unfortunately, the statute requires you to approve or deny within sixty days of receipt of the application. So this has to be done at this meeting.
Okay.
You would you would simply have to indicate, you know, fill in the blanks and then you would adopt the resolution as amended.
Okay, well, I like the idea of, you know, providing the incentive. For the investment and and grant the the abatement for the the fourth year like Councilman Kibble brought up. I would be in support of that.
If I might add another question to everybody, does anybody have any? Concerns about the notion of having April twenty-one, the end of April twenty-one? Being the drop dead for completion of the project? Mr. Schwegler seemed to feel comfortable that he can accomplish that. I think that incentivizes the idea of getting this done sooner rather than later. So. Uh, I I like the idea of that.
Yep. Far better than leaving it open-ended.
City Attorney, will that have to be adjusted as well or just as amended?
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily need to be in the resolution. Um, it does, I mean, you have to put a drop dead date in the resolution. Um. Yeah, it does have to be in the resolution. I was thinking we would put it in the agreement, but it does, it's the second blank.
Okay.
I got a question.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Okay, I'm fully in favor of the resolution. But if if we pass this with the. Uh, tonight with the the fourth year. Uh, not being clearly defined. What if the state of Michigan rejects it, okay? Unless I'm not understanding it correctly. Also, also on the fifth page in there. His goals and objectives, which I'm fully in favor of. Intended use of the building, we will 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 be to house a restaurant with a full bar as well as office space. Uh, it's my caution that the Presbyterian Church may not go for a full bar next door to them, okay? Uh, we'll see, they might or they might not, but I rather think it's a an open concern. Thank you.
Okay, so we we've got. We've got the drop dead date, April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. We've got the threshold for the extension to be evidence that. They've exceeded the one and a half million dollar investment into the property. What was the third leg?
I wrote down during your discussions a good faith of the applicant in moving forward. But that was when I didn't know you were going to put a sooner drop dead date.
Oh.
If I'm, if I'm Mr.
Yeah, City Manager's only go ahead.
I would suggest because of the uncertainty of what is actually going on right now. At that April date is not necessarily that early. You do allow some leniency because if it is not done, then it's not approved and therefore does not continue. Um, there could be other things. I mean, if this applicant is continually moving forward and making the investment and trying to complete it by a specific date. You can put some things within the agreement that potentially could move them along instead of placing it in here. I would, I would push that date back because I think this resolution. Um, you know, it is is the, you know, final item. But your agreement can have certain items in there which allow gives you a little bit more leniency as well as the applicant. Without just giving them, you know, any any amount of time to get it done. I think, you know, completing certain things within a certain amount of days. And if there is, you know, potentially even something wrong and maybe the attorney can comment on this. That there's even the appeal of, you know, because of COVID nineteen or something else that comes up. That they could potentially granted additional time.
Are there, are there commonsensical vehicles that are? Um, rationales that you can, you know, have a timeline? Except in the event that blah, blah, blah happens, that you might be able to move that timeline back?
Yeah, within the agreement, there is something that stays. It talks about reporting requirements or something like that. So you could potentially, you know, the applicant is, whether they're trying to obtain additional funding or completing a certain percentage. Or, you know, must get to, you know, finish drywall or waiting for, you know, a tenant or something like that. I mean, those those could all be things that you could write with the in the agreement. And we don't necessarily have to determine all those agreement items this evening. We can still work on those and that can come back to city council at another meeting.
Okay, so what is it that we do have to end up getting in here to modify the language to be able to account for? The extension of the fourth year?
You would need to set a threshold for a particular dollar amount like you had just stated. Whether you decide that it's one point five million dollars worth of investment in the property. Will allow an extension to occur for the fourth year.
Well, that's commensurate with our our schedule, so I mean, that makes sense to me.
Right, and that's basically on what you just said, so, or you said earlier.
Okay, so if that's something that we can add to the resolution, then we can move forward, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to use your art of law stuff, Lisa, to accomplish that? Or do you want us to struggle through and clumsily put that language together?
So the only factor that you are considered that you want to add in this first blank is the investment amount?
Yes, the extension of the fourth year of abatement predicated on the investment exceeding the one and a half million dollar mark.
I I think that's all you have to say.
Okay.
And that would allow you to extend up to ten years. Now, if you want to limit the extension.
The fourth year.
We could, we could limit it to only a one-year extension, but we would do that down in the now therefore. But this paragraph simply allows an extension based on certain criteria. And it sounds like the only criteria you're concerned with is the investment amount. So, so then.
For the fourth, for that fourth year, too. Personally, I don't have an interest in going beyond four years, so.
Yep, and we can limit that in the now therefore at the bottom. So so here we would just say the application was approved for less than ten years and. The factors, criteria and objectives considered by city council is the investment. Uh, amount. In excess of one point five million dollars.
Correct.
Is necessary for extending the exemption.
Yes.
Okay, and as for the second blank, a drop dead date.
Paul's suggesting that we leave that alone.
Well, you have to put a date. I think Paul's just suggesting that you not lock him into April and you can lock him in dates in our private agreement. But as far as what the state and the county are going to reference, Paul's simply suggesting to put an outside date in the resolution. Which from a practical perspective, I I think it's a good idea. So even if you did December of twenty twenty-two or December of twenty twenty-three. Far out date, and then you could in your private agreement with him, put whatever timelines or benchmarks that you want to put.
Personally, I think that twenty-two, that you said December thirtieth would be the drop dead of twenty-two?
You can make it whatever.
It'll be the thirtieth, not the thirty-first, right? Because the thirty-first is tax day.
Yeah, this is just for purposes of construction, the second blank in the resolution, so you could put whatever date you want.
I was just trying to provide them a little bit more leeway than just having everything completed. Within, you know, by that April, April date. You could say, you can say by December of of twenty twenty-one if you want to. That will give them, you know, still eighteen months still to get the project done. And I think we found his comments that that was um more than adequate for them to complete.
Well, I'm much more comfortable with that being the drop dead. Uh, as long as the language that's in the agreement is a little bit harsher. You know, I mean, a little bit more realistic, where they have to actually have some rationale. Where they couldn't perform from things that were out outside of their control. So, okay, thank you.
And then the third blank is the now therefore. So this is where you decide on years and it sounds like. Councilmember Kibble, your motion is a three-year. Uh, beginning December thirty-first, twenty twenty and ending December thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Two.
Two. Twenty-two. Um, pursuant to the provisions of PA two-ten of two thousand and five as amended. And then we would add in here.
I'm sorry, it would be twenty twenty-three, I apologize, because that goes.
I was.
That's correct.
Thanks, Paul. And then we could add at the end of this paragraph. Only one-year extension may be considered as described above.
I'm good with that. I'd love to hear somebody else weigh in.
I've already mentioned, I'm fully in agreement with it.
I'm in agreement.
Okay, well, that's my resolution.
That's your, you're, you're, that's your motion to approve the resolution as amended today. And then Paul and I will work on just tweaking the language consistent with the amendments that you've suggested, Councilmember Kibble.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Kennedy? Uh, now, Lisa. Um. Should I just go with the following preamble and resolution were offered by Councilmember Kibble and supported by Councilmember Kennedy? And then ask for a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay, city clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in that?
Uh, yes, Dill?
You're on mute.
Yep, yeah, no mic.
Yes. Thank you. Yes. Kennedy?
Yes.
Kurtzwell? Richards?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Bellchat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. On to new business number two this evening, discussion of recording city meetings. Paul, would you like to kick this one off?
Yes, this item was brought up by a council member to potentially record additional city meetings. Um, currently, we only record city council meetings, planning commissions, zoning board of appeals meetings. Our minutes are taken by city staff, other meetings, parks, rec, culture, arts, cable. Historical society minutes are taken by those members in attendance. Currently, as the system is that we do not have Zoom meetings for everything. If we were to record additional meetings, there would be additional costs to bring in staff to operate the equipment to video record the specific meetings. This fee is currently seventy-five dollars for the camera operators. Additional costs may be needed to have someone create the minutes for the meetings if they are currently not taken by city staff. The question tonight is give direction to city staff on whether council wants to record additional meetings. We are still looking at, and we've had several proposals for equipment to assist us in setting. Um, or recording meetings. Uh, we have met with several different suppliers to to provide that that sort of equipment. Uh, the city was going to partner with the school district on this. I'm unsure if the school is still considering or they would in fact contribute to. That original discussion that took place a couple of years ago. Where we would create this joint venture and we would both contribute an equal share to it. So if we were to move forward with the purchase of new equipment that may take this. Recording of the meetings to the next level where we don't necessarily have to have someone set up the meeting every single time or bring somebody in to do this. It may be a lot cheaper and it may just be able to be done by staff. Um, that's all I have for right now and we have to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question, please?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question, please?
Council member Walton, go ahead.
Thank you. With two questions, I guess. Are we required by law to record these meetings?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. And my other question is, is the $75 for camera operations going to be paid for by the city or by these particular commissions for the recordings?
Well, it would ultimately be paid for by the city.
Thank you.
We can budget money for each one of the departments, but it is in fact still coming out of general fund.
Council member Kennedy, go ahead.
I just, I just don't see the, the value add to it at this particular point in time.
Council member Dill, and then I'm coming to you, council member Kibble.
I am just interested in finding out why this was proposed. So if anybody wants to say who they are that proposed it, that would be awesome.
Council member Kibble, go ahead.
Let me tell you, I'm an advocate for transparency. I understand that there are potential hazards from some meetings being conducted, especially planning and ZBA. Those are the ones that have the most potential for, say, a developer to try to capitalize on some misstep of parliamentary procedure that people that are volunteers in a planning commission or a ZBA may not end up having the, the sophistication of process. And it does end up putting an obligation for people to behave by the letter so that we don't get jammed up. I'm intending to take a great deal of time trying to research whether or not there are other communities that have successfully pulled this off. Not necessarily to come back and, and try to push this again, but if I can find some evidence that people have been able to be successful. As I said, I really like the idea of residents being able to click on our website and watch the meeting so that they're aware of what decisions are being made in their name. And oftentimes, as, as much effort as goes into the meeting minutes and things, and the meeting minutes are, even if we were to have video, the meeting minutes would actually be the official record of the meeting. So that wouldn't end up changing. But obviously, if you get enough lawyers around looking at, and don't take it the wrong way, Lisa, looking at some vulnerability for their client, they might end up finding some way to kind of jam us up. So I'd, I'd like to end up being more protected than, than simply trying to push in before we're prepared to actually accept that kind of responsibility. So that's where it came from, Lisa.
Attorney Amami, please, go ahead.
If I can just add food for thought. I think if you're going to do any sort of recording for anything other than city council, it should be across the board and not selective. You're going to record one and not the other. And so if you're going to record, say, planning commission, and I think every one of your commissions should be recorded so that it doesn't appear that we are being selective and hiding things or, as you say, not transparent. I also just want to point out, right now, in the, in the age of Zoom, it's easy to record meetings. It's not when we're not able to do Zoom anymore. And who knows how much longer the governor is going to allow it? Who knows if the legislature amends the legislation to allow continued electronic meetings being conducted? And if we start with Zoom because it's easy to record, then it's really hard to then backpedal. So it is something that you really have to put a lot of thought into before you start doing something like that. It's a lot harder to stop doing it than it is to start doing it.
I'm going to go ahead and just chip in here really quick too. I, I think the idea is good. I, I think it would be something we should look at down the road. But with this, with the situation we're in, with the equipment in that room roughly being installed in 1998 and us having to have someone physically come in and record it across all those boards and commissions, that's going to end up being a lot of money. Maybe we could reevaluate this down the road if we, and the schools can ever get together and actually get this thing done. And I gotta tell you, I think that's very questionable at this point in time. So I, I'm not in disagreement with it. I know there's some folks on some boards and commissions that may not necessarily be on board with it. But I, I'm in agreement that the transparency is a good thing. So. Council member Kennedy, I know you had a comment, and then I'll come over to you, council member Kibble. But go ahead, council member Kennedy.
Well, just to, to pick up where the attorney Amami left off. I mean, if we're going to do all of the boards and commissions, that escalates the cost considerably. If they, let's just say for the sake of discussion, every one of them meets once a month. I mean, that's, that's what, $900 a year for every one of those commissions? To get somebody, and that assumes we could find somebody. So I mean, that's a lot of money. And I meant, like I said before, I'm not sure the value was there. I wouldn't, I would not be opposed to revisiting it down the road if the, you know, we get the change in the technology and the equipment is a little easier to, to work. So it doesn't require somebody actually being there to actually operate it. Might be something to look at, but right now, I just don't see the investment providing a worthwhile return.
Council member Kibble.
I have things to say.
Carl, go.
Council member Richards, I'm sorry, you were breaking up. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope I'm coming through. I just want to give you some facts. It's omitted in here that the historical commission and the historical society are different entities. The historical society is self-supporting. And the last two programs we had there, I believe the vendor made their own recordings. And I'm sure they did, okay? But that doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to submit them to the cable commission to put on our, our channel. We have wonderful programs there and they need to be recorded, I think, but not society, not the regular business meetings or the commission meetings. That's just not, we don't need transparency. It's not a big enough deal. Cable commission and cultural arts, they take care of themselves pretty well. Parks and recreation, I don't think that would work too well. Over the years, going back when I was a city activist, I participated with planning commission for at least six years, almost every meeting. And very little of anything I put in there ever got recorded, okay? Which may or may not have been doing any good, I don't know. But it certainly wasn't transparency. But in any event, I feel the, the planning commission should be agreeing with having their meetings recorded because over the 15 or 20 years, there's been a number of lawsuits against us that have happened because of planning commission decisions. Now, I don't know. It, I would say it's needs, I gotta disagree with attorney Lisa on this, okay? Some need to be done, I think, and some certainly do not. Also, we've got a housing commission and the water purification commission that meets here in city hall once every three months, I believe. Water purification board. Anyway, that's just food for thought on this whole matter. And I think I go along with Dan, the mayor Dan, that we need to work on this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Richards. Council member Kibble, go ahead.
I disagree that the, that all the board should end up being looked at equally. Principally, the reason I thought that ZBA and planning were really important to get on for transparency's sake was because their decisions have direct impact on the community's restrictions or regulations of activities where essentially all of the other commissions are principally performing a matter of programming. They're, they're scheduling their programming or trying to create the, the order in which they're going to conduct studies to be able to provide programming down the road, whatever. But they're not things that actually directly impact decision-making of, of anybody that has activities going on in the city from that day on, from whatever their ruling is. And city council is the only one that actually has the ability to supersede whatever their decision is. So the, where all these, all the other commissions, if, if city council isn't on board with what their decision-making is, I conceivably, they could end up underfunding to address that. You know, certainly not a tactic that I, I would look forward to. But where planning and ZBA would actually be something of a different nature, a struggle between both bodies if there was a conflict of direction made. That's all. So that was my rationale. Thank you.
What it sounds like, Mr. Mayor, is I can come back with information when in fact we do discuss with the schools regarding the potential for installing the equipment and getting a dollar amount and then see how that whole thing would work and then can report back based upon some discussion that took place here tonight.
I think, I think that would be good. I think that would be fine. So. So with that, does anyone have anything else to comment on, on new business number two? Okay, great. New business number three this evening, purchase and installation of approximately 6,000 square foot of top coat asphalt for rail trail path south of 11 mile to the west of the Knoll subdivision.
Everybody, good to see everybody. So basically, the Department of Public Works needs to repair a section of bike path that is holding water. This is a scheduled purchase for this year's budget and is part of an ongoing update to improve the path for the residents. This expenditure can be purchased out of the capital improvements account, 401451802. And our quotes are attached for your guidance review.
I had council member Dill first, followed by council member Kurtzwell. So council member Dill, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'm very excited about this because I'm on the trail every day. But I mapped out where the, where the repairs are going to be. And I saw that this was lower than the, than was budgeted. And I just wondered, is there any opportunity to expand it? I mean, personally, I'd love to see the whole thing redone. But is there any chance that it can be extended to 11 mile, all the way up to 11 mile or further down?
As a matter of fact, yeah, it's recently been brought to my attention. I don't know if, Paul, you want to speak to that or you want me to go ahead and expound? I just actually found out recently that the path kind of had issues there farther down the line to the north of where this, this is something we've been thinking about for a couple of months now. So.
Right.
I don't know if you want to expound on that, Paul, or you want me to, or?
Just that we, we had found that there is a couple of other damaged areas and one specifically that occurred within the last bad storms that we had that we needed repair. And because this number was a lot lower than what was originally, the quotes came in a lot lower than what was originally budgeted based upon quantities, I believe that Doug could in fact talk with the low bidder and see if they could, you know, continue the pathway more so north. And perhaps you could have, you know, even approve, if you're looking at doing that or want to do that, that you could approve up to a specific dollar amount. And then we could get additional work done instead of having to wait next year or then rebidding it for another project.
So we could suggest an up to amount if we want to approve this, is what you're saying?
Yes, you could. And then we would, or Doug, Doug would be able to talk with the low bidder and discuss with them the additional work that could be done.
That would be great. It just, it's just so important right now, especially with people trying to get out and there's not a lot to do. There are so many people on the trail right now. And it's, it's very difficult if you're on a bike or something else to get out of people's way and to give everyone the distance they need when you're trying to avoid potholes and other issues. So that would be, I would hope that we would entertain that.
Council member Kurtzwell, I'm going to come to you and then council member Walton.
Well, actually, I was going to go ahead and make the motion.
Okay.
I moved to approve the purchase and installation of approximately 6,000 square feet of top coat asphalt for the rail trail path south of 11 mile to the west of the Knoll subdivision by D and H Asphalt Company for 14,393. Also, I moved to permit additional paving on the rail trail not to exceed more than $6,000.
I support.
So we have a motion and a support. Council member Kibble, further discussion.
Yes, I was curious, Maggie, was the balance of what was in the budget below the bid? Or beyond the bid, I should say?
You know, I looked at it. I couldn't tell you for sure. So I don't want to say, but I think it sounds right, Doug. I mean, I'm adding 6,000.
Well, Paul, do you know what they're like?
Yeah, the original budget was for $40,000 worth of work.
Yeah.
Well, let's go north. Let's go 20, don't you think? Well, that's about where you're at. Yeah, okay.
So what do you want it? So I'll amend my motion. What's the dollar amount?
I mean, heck, that's a pretty good, I mean, if they're going to accept the unit pricing, why don't we go to 25,000?
So an additional amount. So the first asphalt project for 14,393 is in the motion. And then my motion also includes an additional amount of $25,000 to be used.
I was thinking 25 as a balance between the two.
So that's, that's roughly $10,000.
Yeah.
So, so then I move to also include an additional $10,000 in paving on the rail trail path in the area of the 11 mile in Knoll's area. How's that? Because that's the area where it's at, I think.
Yep. It would help to have Doug do the assessment where like, because there's some areas that are by themselves that aren't in that general area that are really damaged. So it'd be good to get those attended to.
Council member Kennedy?
You know, that, that is absolutely.
Council member Walton, you've been recognized.
Give the guy a blank check for another $11,000. And he just says, well, I think that needs to be done or that needs to be done. I think Doug needs to look at it critically and say, these spots here, and if we got money left over, great. Let's find some other areas that need to be done too. But not just to throw another 11,000 in that same area because they happen to be in the neighborhood. Rob is spending the 25,000 on repairs, but not necessarily all in that one area if it doesn't require it. If it does, that's a different situation. But I think we need to look at that and make that evaluation. Not just give them, you know, free range.
Well, don't vote for the motion, but that's the motion.
Council member Walton, thank you for your patience. We had a amended motion and a second. Did you want anything to add to that?
I want to say that I agree with council member Kennedy that I think there are other areas that need to be looked at and be repaired. So if we're going to put a dollar amount out there, I don't want to put that dollar amount along with a section of the rail trail.
Okay, thank you for your clarification. Council member Dill, go ahead.
Would it be possible, if we, since we had 40,000 before, could we sit, could we stick with that motion, but also, I don't know how to state this, but some kind of additional amount for spot repairs in other areas?
Do you want to eat up to 40?
Well, not necessarily all the way to 40, but I mean, I don't know how much these things cost, but I know, I mean, there's some times where my teeth are rattling on the trail.
A lot of places that need help.
Yeah. So I mean, could we say another $5,000 for spot repairs? I don't know. Maggie, we're just going to keep adding things to you.
So.
Well, you got a motion. You got a motion seconded. So you. Well, you got a motion, you got a motion seconded, so you either vote for it, or you vote, either vote for it, or you vote it down and start over.
Right, okay.
I have something to say.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Okay, just some factual interjection here. I've been on that rail trail many times. And it certainly deteriorated the worst in the area that they have marked. Now, there's other areas can get by with just normal seal coating to preserve it. But in the area that's been marked, the reason that that's deteriorated so much is because there's water underneath the substructure of that old railroad grade. And it all comes from the Knolls. Okay, and I've been saying it for years, that land is unstable up there at the top. That's why the water table is 52 feet higher. That land, water is 52 feet higher than a water table. If the contractor can address this and put the amount of aggregate and some other drainage, if possible, in there, it would last longer. Okay, because that it is what it is, okay? And it's going to continue to deteriorate unless something is done to, you know, supersede the natural effects of the water that's going to be always be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kennedy?
You know, I'll agree with Councilmember Richards on that. That is exactly the discussion that I had with the city manager and the superintendent of utilities. That, you know, what is the root cause of the problem? And, you know, it's settled, it's concave, it isn't crowned. But is the problem that the asphalt wasn't installed properly, or that it's settled over time? And so the question becomes, are we really going to address the root cause of the problem? Or are we going to perfume the pig, so to speak, by just putting the asphalt in there to raise up the elevation and pitch it so the water runs off? And again, eventually it'll end up back the way it was because we didn't address the subsurface requirements. Now, I realize that $14,000 isn't going to do that. So, you know, there's no problem putting that on there and it'll probably last another 20 years. But again, it's not addressing the root cause of the issue. Just the symptom of the problem.
Well, we have a motion. Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
Yes, sorry, I don't want to prolong this anymore than we have to, but personally, I would like to see us expend that 40,000 that we've got in the budget. So I'm going to vote against the motion, and we can escalate this bid and the balance to of 40,000 to go through the and attend to a lot more of the areas that need help than what we are looking at right now. So. And quite honestly, this section of trail that's failing right now is 25 years old, has trucks driving on it. That's where the depressions are from. So that's, that gets wedged in there. That's going to hold up just fine for quite some time. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, City Clerk Lisa Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote, please?
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Kibble?
No.
Kennedy?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
Thank you. Dill?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
No? Thank you. Richards?
No.
Walton?
I'm going to have to go with no, so we can reevaluate it.
And Felchat?
I will, I will agree with that and also vote no then.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract with D and H for $14,393 for the repair of the rail trail and take the balance of that and 40, to make $40,000 worth of repairs to be determined by the staff, the city manager and the DPW director to apply against the rail trail.
I second.
We had a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you again lead us in a roll call vote? Thank you.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Felchat?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. At this time, we're moving on to new business number four. Sanitary sewer evaluation study phase two, Northeast Quadrant Section 20-3. Doug, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The multi-year plan to inspect our infrastructure has begun, and we currently have completed Phase One, as we're all aware, to inspect the Northwest Quadrant. As a continuation, the low bidder is now submitting a change order to continue on with the next phase with an understanding to bill after July 1st to not affect this year's budget. At the recommendation of our engineers, city requests approval to allow Pipe Tech to continue with Phase Two of the sanitary sewer evaluation study per all the guidelines set in Phase One for $40,693.75. The funding for this project will come from Water Sewer Professional Services Account, number 592-557-801.
Thank you, Doug. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to approve the award of Phase Two of the sanitary sewer evaluation study to Pipe Tech Infrastructure for the amount of $40,693.75, underlying item
That's correct.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
I'm in favor of the study and included in that study, I would hope that they would make an evaluation of the drain that goes alongside Walker's Garage up there and then goes underground all the way down the middle of Ada Street. And, no, not Ada, that other street there. And then comes out on the other side of the, of the parts store. And it's above ground. That happens to be the oldest drain historically in the city. That was built by the railroad, not underlying township offices back in the 1870s, late 1870s. And it was placed in there to drain off water. When they were mining the land, they knew that that land had a lot of water that they could not control. They didn't want the railroad track to wash away. That, I've been in that drain, okay, and I've worked on it a little bit myself, and it needs to be inspected and cleaned out if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Anyone else? We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Walton, to approve the award of Phase Two of the sanitary sewer evaluation study to Pipe Tech Infrastructure, the amount of $40,693.75, underlying item 592.557-801. City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Sure. Richards?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Felchat?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, City Clerk Deaton. At this time, we'll move on to our normal time for the budget. Did anyone have anything for the budget this evening down on this part? Paul, I was just curious about if we had any progress on possibly bringing Carol on full time as at City Hall.
Well, with tonight's budget approval, Carol will now be brought on full time as of July 1st. You had brought up last meeting about potentially, if that was something, or maybe a meeting before, about bringing her on earlier. We do have enough money within this year's budget to the fact of the Economic Development Director not being hired as of yet. And the money that we saved from the prior person that was occupying the other position of within the Water Department to be able to pay for the wages if in fact we wanted to start that before next year's budget year. I guess it's, it's, it's good that you in fact approved the 2020-21 budget, so that position is in there. Had you not approved it, or whatever, that'd be very difficult to bring it on or start that position before the end of the year. But we definitely can do that if that is, that's the way you want to move forward. We do have enough work for moving forward with all the projects and things that we want to get going. And so we can, we can do that, you know, within the next couple of weeks.
I just, I have another comment, and I'm open to hearing anyone else's comments as well. This has been an all hands on deck type thing here. And I got to tell you, I feel like we're still short-staffed in that building, and Carol Brandon is an asset to our community. It would be of my voice that we look into getting this done as soon as possible. Councilmember, we'll go ahead.
I was just curious. Is the the DDA director position just sort of in limbo right now because of candidates? Or because of you're, you're questioning whether or not there's value added at this stage with the economy doing what it's doing?
Well, I think, right, I think there is value added to hiring the position and bringing that individual on. The hesitation that I had within the last several weeks had to do with the budget projections that we were getting out of Department Treasury, that potential dollar amounts that they were talking about that we would be no longer receiving through revenue sharing or other means. We did in fact get the, those reductions, and we did provide those with you within, within the packet. We are fortunate within our budget that our revenue sharing only provides about 15% of the total revenues that we have for the city for the general fund. There still is obviously the Water and Sewer Fund. So any, any reduction that we would have within revenue sharing, which we did show in there, was very minor to our overall budget. We still are projecting that we will have revenues over expenditures this year within general fund, even with its reduction amounts that we have. As you know, that we've just discussed it earlier in the meeting regarding Tax Day, December 31st. Tax Day was determined last December 31st, and thus our tax bills going out in July and December are based upon last year's values. We have no idea what the effect is going to be next year for property tax revenues, which make up a higher percentage of revenues actually are. But so I expect that we will move forward with this and have somebody onboard before July 1st.
Okay.
In the director position. Sorry, that was a long discussion.
No, actually, that's what I wanted to hear, though, because I didn't know if the motivation or the lack of motivation was simply because they didn't, you didn't figure they would be impactful at this stage of the game with the economy doing what it's doing. So.
It was several parts, and one, the fact also with a limited amount of hours, and was this person going to be doing a lot, perhaps only being in her one or two days a week. But now we see the uptick. We see that potentially is now that based upon some of the restrictions, we think some things are going to be lifted within June. And we want to, we do in fact want to hit the ground running with individuals to assist our business community.
I was hoping we would be prepared, prepared once things do start to loosen up.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think one of the key advantages that this individual will bring to the table is when you look at some of the consumer surveys that are out there, Consumer Sentiment Index, there is clearly an uptick in terms of people's future expectations as to where the business climate will be six, seven months from now. And I think it would be good for us from a planning perspective is to have somebody in place so when those consumer expectations hit our market in our area, we will be ready with certain activities that will be welcomed. I think it's going to be a little bit difficult to bring consumers back into the business environment for sustained periods of time. I think they'll probably come into a business, spend 15 minutes, get in, get out, get used to going in and being around people in a retail setting, which is a little bit of a tighter, close environment than what you'll find at a large grocery store, or Home Depot, or Lowe's where you have more space. So I think that this Economic Development Director can work very closely with the businesses in creating a climate where the consumer is going to feel safe coming into our businesses in the downtown. Another sales strategy, I think, for the Economic Development Director, I've been in contact with several individuals that are going to be moving into our area as soon, I think they're going to try to be here by July. They are moving from cities that have large DDAs, large downtowns. One is Royal Oak, two are coming from Farmington. And they're choosing South Lion because the large, big DDA and all the attractions that sunshine brings is not what is important to them anymore. What's important to them is a more comfort-feeling, safe downtown than a large sprawling, close contact, close network kind of thing like that you find in those two communities. So I think we might psychologically have some really good opportunities to move forward with our DDA. I found that very interesting, the choices that they were making.
Thank you. Anyone else for the budget for City Managers Elnick this evening? All right, great. With that, we'll move on to the managers' report.
A couple items. We continue to be updated and monitor the local, state, and national regarding COVID-19. We are preparing right now for the potential for City Hall opening up. We don't have an exact date yet. We are putting all the safety precautions in place and getting prepared and working on our preparedness plan. I've been working with the city attorney on that to make sure that we are fully operational and in fact, have gone over all the protocols that are necessary in order to do so. We all also were open the, I want to mention that we opened the garden plots for gardening this past weekend, so they are out there. And gardening and practicing safe social distancing. And we are looking at soon to bring back the cemetery workers. I've had discussions with them and met with them out there last week. And we expect that they would potentially be starting within the next couple of weeks, providing all the safety protocols for them, doing split shifts, so all of them are not working together based upon the demographics that are out there. And we definitely want to make sure our cemetery looks good. We've been thankful of the public and for their understanding that we've been having to cut and not necessarily have it weed whacked and cleaned as much as it was, or as it usually is. But very thankful that they've been understanding with that. And that's all I have.
Does anyone have anything for Paul this evening? All right, thank you, Paul. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address, and hopefully, City Clerk Deaton can see you guys.
And so right now, we just have one person on the phone, which is Councilmember Richards, and no one else is raising their hand.
All right, thank you. At this time, we will close public comment for the evening, and we'll go on to our council comments. And we'll start with you, Councilmember Kittle.
Yesterday, as I had mentioned to Chief Vogel, it was odd to not have the parade and some of the ceremonial aspects of Memorial Day. I happened to, I was walking my dog and over at the Veterans Monument, there was a gentleman that was, he was reviewing the monument and he was with his granddaughter. And so they, I just pulled up. I was going to take a picture and right at that time, they actually walked. They did the once around the block, came out to the sidewalk. The gentleman turned around, stood at attention. The gentleman turned around, stood at attention, saluted the monument. And I had my camera ready to take the picture and I just simply couldn't bring myself to violate that moment for him. It, it's unfortunate because it really would have been a delightful picture. But it, it really moved me though, the sincerity and the understanding that that gentleman put into that moment with his granddaughter was really touching. So I was grateful that I had that opportunity to see that. I, I didn't happen to take the dog over to the cemetery too and it was kind of surprising. I, I wasn't aware that the staff hadn't been tending to that as much as typical. It, it stands to reason. I haven't been there in a month or so, so. But you could, I don't know, that solemn occasion, it really was kind of telling. It's too bad we couldn't have had one little dress-up of the cemetery prior to that ceremony, but I, I certainly understand the practicalities of the situation. So that's essentially all I've got. I'm, I'm tickled that things are turning around. I wish we wouldn't have gone from winter right into the dead of summer, but hopefully things are going to settle out to be normal for a little bit. So, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble. Councilmember Walton?
You're on mute?
Yep.
Thanks. I figured that out. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to say that I think that although we didn't have a parade yesterday, I think that our city did a great job. Mr. Mayor, you had the challenge out there for people to decorate their homes. We had the, the video. We had our vets out there hanging up the flags. We, we did a lot. And there was a lot of people from behind the scenes that spent their time and worked hard to make sure went off as nicely as we possibly could. So I think that everyone really deserves a, a really good pat on the back for all their hard work and their extra thoughts into it. It's not an easy thing to remember, give it, give, I guess, give the accreditation or, you know, look at these people and not forget them, but yet not to be able to give them their tradition. So again, I think that we did a great job and I really appreciate all the hard work that everyone put into it. I do want to remind people that as we open back up from the governor's orders to stay socially distanced, to still be safe, let's not take it out on these essential workers who are just trying to do their job. When you have a person making sandwiches at the local restaurant or serving up your groceries at the Kroger, just be kind to them. That they, they have to work just like you and everyone is stressed out. It's not an easy time. So let's keep that in mind as we go through. And I want to say also that the hotels are open back up, Lake Street Tavern is open back up. There's so many businesses here in town that we should be helping support. So let's just keep that in mind, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. A couple of really nice comments there. Thank you. Councilmember Dill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My comments are almost exactly the same as Rose, so I'll go quickly. I just wanted to say welcome back to a lot of our retail stores. It's been very exciting to see some of them get a little life back into Main Street and to some of our restaurants. And I just want to remind people also that the rules that Councilmember Walton was talking about, sometimes those are rules that they have to follow, but sometimes businesses are putting rules in place because they feel like that's the best thing for their, to keep their people safe and to keep the customers safe. So let's not fight them. We want to, we want to support them and we want them to stay open. So let's do what we can to help them with that. I wanted to thank everybody also who did work. I took a two-hour walk around the city and I saw, took pictures of all the kind of decorations honoring our fallen, our veterans. I wanted to thank Dana Johnson for the work that she did in, in trying to make sure that people remember to do that, even though she wasn't able to put on the parade. And I just really wanted to thank the mayor for supporting the gun violence awareness day. It's a very important issue to a lot of people in the community and I know the people who put this forward were very pleased with your support. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill. Councilmember Kurtswell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In March, I started receiving phone calls from people of faith in South Lyon regarding the reopening of their churches for at least a minimal service. By April, I was receiving more calls and by late April, I was starting to make phone calls regarding this issue and the reopening of churches. On May sixth, certain plaintiffs in the religious and the faith community filed suit against Governor Whitmer in part for the state's violation of their First Amendment right to express their religion. Six days later, I learned that churches would be reopening beginning May nineteenth. So I would like to publicly thank Attorney David Kalman, Stephen Kalman, Jack Jordan, Aaron Mercino of the Great Lakes Justice Center in Lansing. And also like to thank Tracy Lee in Southfield, Michigan. These attorneys went to bat. They fought hard. And what they did was they protected a very, very important First Amendment constitutional right of the faithful, not only living in the, in the state of Michigan, but also living here in South Lyon. So for many of the South Lyon churches, I know my church opened up this weekend under protocols far stricter than the CDC, far stricter than what Governor Whitmer ever put out. And it's unfortunate that the churches had to wait this long, but this was a lawsuit that the plaintiffs were going to win. So I want to thank those attorneys for everything they've done for the faith-based community here in South Lyon. I'd also like to express my thanks and gratitude to all those who gave their lives for the freedoms that we enjoy today, including our First Amendment rights, our Second Amendment rights, and all rights in the Constitution. These fallen soldiers, they gave their lives for duty and for their country. I would also like to thank our frontline workers who during this past pandemic also gave their lives for the same thing. They fought for duty. They did what they could. They fought for their country for everything we believed in, in terms of life. Those frontline workers were there preserving life. And I want to thank them too. We remember a lot of people on Memorial Day and I think that definition is going to be expanded as the years go on to include all those that lost their lives in this pandemic. Good night, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtswell. Councilmember Richards?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to address Veterans Matters first of all. I wish to thank the, the VFW and primarily the officers Jim Planke, John Anderson, Commander, and John, number two, I don't recall his second name, Vice, Vice Commander, for putting up the thirty flags in the center of town with the chrome balls on the flagpoles that they did, which were the most presentable of all the flags that they had. And their new flags that they had ordered did not get here in time, but they will be putting them up at a later date in, in town. Also, the Dana Johnson was walking uptown with her dog yesterday and I spoke to her and she said, come on up to the center of town, but I had other places to go. She was going to play taps at the Four Corners. I didn't hear it, but I'm sure she put in a good effort. Also, Phillips Funeral Home honored the veterans in some capacity. As per the recommendation in the previous meeting, I submitted a name of a forgotten veteran to Miss Andrea Phillips. When I called, I thought I was talking to the answering machine or answering service. But Andrea Phillips answered the phone and I, I got this gentleman's name included in the veterans prior to Memorial Day. He died two years ago and he was definitely a South Lyon person. He died, he was a Vietnam vet. Also, our historic village was very lovely decorations done on the weekend before the holiday by the efforts of Linda Ross, President of Historical Society, Vicki Classman, Vice Chairman of Historical, and Bob Cook, also one of the officers of our Historical Society. And they did a beautiful job and it looked great. To move on with some other things, I just want to thank the DPW for transplanting the trees at four sixty-one Washington Street to different locations. That's a victory. The asbestos siding has not been removed as yet, but it will be done so shortly. And lastly, our Marathon gas station uptown has been designated as an emergency location by the federal government, which means that it has to be supplied with gas, diesel, and kerosene at all times in the event of an emergency. The owner of the station, Sean, also received a federal grant to install an outside generator in case of a power outage. I imagine this has to be a three-phase capacity, but I'm not, not sure on that. And with that, I wanted to say thank you to everyone that, that's putting in an effort to do something for our community and to keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I want to recognize the efforts of the South Lyon Area Community Television Group. They're putting together the Memorial Day Tribute. I thought they did a great job with the video highlighting our city, past Memorial Day events, and helping us remember those who made the ultimate sacrifice for our country. I also want to thank all of the volunteers who participated in narrating the video and reading the Gettysburg Address. It was just wonderful to have that many folks from our community come together to provide that support. So thanks again to the SLA CTV for a job well done. On another note, following the governor's recent executive order, we have a number of retail establishments that are again opening their doors to customers, so I would encourage our residents to take advantage of that opportunity and support the stores and restaurants throughout our city. And finally, I want to remind everyone that there's a fundraiser underway in conjunction with the Oakland County Main Street Program to raise funds for the businesses within the DDA. The Oakland County Main Street Program will match the raised funds up to four thousand dollars for this event. So please contribute whatever you can, five dollars, ten dollars, or whatever. Just look up Patronicity South Lyon and make a contribution. There are currently nineteen days left to contribute and so far, they've raised twenty-four hundred dollars of the four thousand dollar target. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. I just have a few things this evening and, and you guys all kind of touched on it as well is the community continues to answer the bell across the board from top to bottom. Even tonight, it looked like we were going to be going without video and everyone, you know, pulled together and we were able to get through that without having really too much of a mess. That, I appreciate that. It's difficult enough with you on video, I assure you. So thank you to everyone that participated over the weekend with everything. I mean, obviously, I know everyone kind of touched on this, but you know, that's the type of stuff that makes you proud of the community and, you know, they keep continuing to answer the bell. So keep it up and remember what Councilmember Walton said too. I mean, this is affecting people at home and in ways that you may not be thinking of and, you know, let's try and be good to each other out there. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Thank you for being nice to me, Mr. Mayor. Can I move to adjourn?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a great night all.
Thank you, Dan. Great, great meeting.
Thank you. Have a great night, everybody.